State and federal, I believe you have the right to. You are representing as electors. And this is something that's available at state government to all members of parliament. It's something that's available in federal parliament to all members of parliament, but not to councillors. And I believe that this is very important to allow councillors the opportunity to communicate directly with the people that they as electors represent. There are a number of details that would need to be worked out if the state government accept what we're advocating for should this motion carry. And I think those are the details that I didn't really want to specify in the motion because, you know, I don't think that that's something we really want to end up having a debate about. I didn't want the motion to not succeed on the basis of an argument over those details. And that's something that obviously, you know, should the local government sector advocate for this, they would need to negotiate that with state government. But that includes things like the regularity with which it's updated, what the permitted uses of the role are. You've got to understand that there are certain permitted uses when it comes to provisions of state and federal MPs. How the costs of providing the role will be funded, you know, is that going to be part funded by state government, part by local or all by one sector? And also there's safeguards to be put in place to transmit copies of the role, whether they're hard copies or electronic copies. And, you know, those are things that should, should we advocate for this as a sector across the state, you know, we'll negotiate and work out in due course. I have had some comments made to me by Alderman when I consulted on this motion about the question of equity between, you know, the benefit it gives to incumbents. One of the things I've pointed out in my splanching notes is that incumbents do already have a number of advantages as they do in any part of government. But at the moment, there isn't a level playing field anyway because there's an argument that councillors who are members of political parties or people seeking to be candidates for council could actually have access through their political party if the party agreed to provide them with a copy of the role. And they could reasonably argue that it's for party purposes when using it to communicate as a candidate, which doesn't provide a level playing field when it comes to independence. So, you know, that's something I'd point out in response to that argument. But if there are other arguments against this motion, I'll address them in my own report.
Yes, look, I am happy indeed to support this motion and the crux of it is about us being able to more effectively do our job and engage with the constituents and residents as well as the rate payers in the municipality. I think one of the questions that comes to mind is when thinking about this motion, what in your head makes it seem more appropriate for a state and a federal elected representative to have that information and for us not to have that information? Because I can't rationalise that. And for me, you know, if you're completely ambiguous one way or the other or indifferent one way or the other, I think ask yourself that question. And I think on that basis, you'd support the motion as it stands. I'd like to just go again about what Alderman Hume was pointing out about the advantage that candidates that run under a political party franchise have in relation to this matter. I think that that is important and I think that a level playing field is very important. This isn't going to completely level the playing field because such franchise candidates can potentially be through one means or another getting taxpayer deductible contributions that other independent candidates couldn't. So this is, this is an element to, if you like, create some equity on that sense. But more than anything, it's about effectiveness of doing our jobs as elected representatives.
Mr Mayor, I think this debate comes down to two aspects. Firstly, the dissemination of information to the public at large. And this is basically what can come out of this if the changes are made. Because under the existing Local Government Act, the person, body or organisation must not, without reasonable excuse, use information obtained from a list of electors provided under subsection six unless the information is used for purposes connected with an election. So that's quite clear as far as the Local Government Act is. Another point I want to make here is that local government has not been recognised in the constitution as yet. And therefore, there is this gap between what information should be available to the public or what access elected representatives from councils should have available to them and which could fall into the hands of the members of the public by the very nature of having access to the electoral rolls regardless of whether or not you are in local government or in state and federal. The existing arrangement that exists for state and federal members of parliament is that they need to access the electoral role in order to communicate with the electors they represent. Then the same argument is being said here, that should be applied to representatives in local government. There is a clear indication here, from my point of view, that privacy conditions that exist in the electoral role, which are not in the public telephone directory or accessed online, would be available if this motion gets up or if it goes through the processes to achieve approval through local government association. Then the members of public may get access to information through their local representative as council representative, which could breach privacy conditions and provisions within that particular area. Currently, the electoral roll as far as local government is concerned is only available at election time. And I would like to see that stayed until such time as we get elevated to the rank and file of state and federal. The state and federal governments, or parliaments I should say, have parliamentary privilege. And that is where there is this opportunity for members of state and federal to say what they want to do about a person and have that privilege in order to be able to say it. If this becomes available to elected representatives, then they would have an update on those persons who have moved into that city and could write to them and say, welcome, I would like to come and talk to you. And therefore, they may have a benefit leading up to election where they have that person on note and have been to them to see them on any issue. They may have just introduced themselves and therefore have an advantage of knowing who has moved into the city and on what basis. Currently, we can't do that unless we are contacted and we can get and establish our own database, which in turn we can promote or use if it's that the case at election time. I think this is dangerous. I think it's going to impact upon the privacy of individuals who currently have that basis of protection on the electoral roll. And until such time as we get our act together in local government and establish our credibility within the constitution, I think this is a very, very dangerous precedent and I will not support it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I fully support this motion. Alderman James says privacy is an issue. That's not for us to consider. We're requesting that this be provided. Whether privacy is an issue or not is to be determined by the authority that says yes or no. We can have this information. We can but ask. We're not voting on providing, that's what it's called, we're voting on requesting provision of this.
Times change very rapidly, Mr Mayor, and I can see that we have had discussions in looking at voting online. Consequently, I think that a lot of information that comes down can be transmitted via web and online activities. And in the past, I'm not sure, I could be wrong, there was, there is an opportunity to get legislation and different council policies on discs. So I predict that in the future, electoral rolls will be available on discs. And that due to the fact that we are elected for four years at a time, even though we might not have some kind of legislative ability to seek updates, that fundamentally, we are those decision makers closest to people at a grassroots level. And it seems ridiculous to me that we can't have updates when the minute an election is called, we can seek to get a copy of the electoral roll, be it either a hard copy or a disc. So I feel that in the future, to streamline information, to make life a lot easier for everybody in performing their roles, that this request is an efficient and effective method of determining and updating current information.
Mr Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate a paragraph that is contained within the motion of Alderman Hume. And that was that councillors elected as endorsed candidates of a registered political party may have an advantage over someone who isn't. And from that point of view, I support this motion because there are many of us round this table that are not members of a registered political party and we would not necessarily want to see an advantage to those that are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think that's an important point that Alderman fairly makes. I am, I will disclose right now, I am a member of a political party. I'm not, I'm not an endorsed candidate for council for that political party and I don't presume to represent that political party. I chose to run as an independent, which is allowed by the rules of that party of which I'm a member. And I don't want, actually want to see, you know, party, party politics, party issues come into local government, which is why I chose to do that. Having said that, as a member of that party, I could probably legitimately go to the state secretary of that party and say, I would like access to a copy of the electoral roll so that I can communicate to people in the city of Clarence via direct mail, you know, in a particular area across the city, whatever it is. Or alternatively, to ask them to send a letter on my behalf promoting me, endorsing my candidacy, whatever. So yes, that is an advantage that's potentially available, depending on how political parties would choose to operate and, you know, how they choose to endorse people. Alderman James made reference to the Local Government Act, but he was talking about the Local Government Act as it's currently written. Now, in terms of the issue of the data falling into hands of people who are not authorised to have it, exactly the same risk could exist with those who have access to the electoral roll now. A state or federal member of parliament or their office could disclose part of the electoral roll or a whole electoral roll, either deliberately or inadvertently. If they did so, there are provisions under the relevant acts that require that they not do so and there are potentially penalties available if they do. Now, what we are advocating here would need some legislative change. And in requiring legislative change, what could also be written in legislation are what are the permitted uses of a role when a councillor has access to the role for their municipality? And what are the penalties if they misuse or disclose the role in a way that they're not authorised to do so under the act? So if Alderman James is saying that we need to first establish our credibility, I'd like to know how he proposes that we need to establish our credibility before, you know, we have a right to access the role. As far as I see, there are three levels of government. We're the third level of government. The other levels of government are able to get access to a list of addresses for the people that they represent as electors. But we at local government at the moment aren't able to access a list of who we are representing, including the electoral role for our municipality and the general manager's role. It's a simple principle, I hope you support it.
The motion reads that council promote and conduct a trial microchipping of cats in Riston Vale, Ropie and Claridan Vale at a subsidised cost of $10 per cat, hopefully kittens, and that a report be prepared on the outcome of the trial. Earlier on during the year, Clarence Council led the way in discussions with the state government at looking at cat legislation and the necessity for councils and the state to work in with the federal government on cat management across the board with both urban cats and feral cats. Council then allocated $5,000 in the current budget to look at management of the issue for the current budgetary year. The work being done at a state level is progressing and progressing positively. However, it will probably not be finalised before our next budget round. So the legislation looking at management for feral cats in particular will not be available after our next budget discussions. And I presume that we will have some information to look at options for the next budget. However, with this budget, we have allocated $5,000. And the motion is to conduct a trial microchipping in which we can then start to feel how the community will react to different management styles. This one in particular, I think, we've done before in the past anyway, in a small way. But that, for me, this would be the beginning of like an annual event with ongoing support during the year as we decide with a future well-detailed programme. So this programme is only for the $5,000. The costs per cat are currently at $25, so we would be asking participants to pay $10 and we would cover the remainder. Cats are an ongoing issue, kittens in particular. And I think by the time we get this project out, hopefully we will catch that first round of this sum of kittens as well. So I look forward to support in getting cat management going in Clarence.
Thanks, Mayor. This motion is, it is a huge problem. And hopefully, legislation at state level will come into existence and at that time, we will obviously comply with that. But I think this is, this is a start in addressing a huge problem.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions in relation to this. The $5,000 that's set aside for cat management, has any of that been spent on any other cat management activities other than this motion or proposed to be spent? And the estimate in your, in the general manager's comments is provided an estimate of $25 if the services provided by the cat centre. So the people participating is paying $10. Would it be right that the unit cost be 15 and therefore would be within this budget if roughly 30% of registered cats? Does that sound correct?
Yeah, 333. 333.
I just wanted to clarify those couple of things and I support the motion.
Based on the math that I just quickly did, 333 cats could be dissexed. Now, based on the fact that a female cat, non-dissexed, can actually produce 12 kittens a year, I've done further maths to suggest that 3,996 kittens could be prevented from being produced if we proceed. So to me, it's a worthwhile exercise, jumping ahead of the gun, it's actually leading the way. We're not necessarily procrastinating, but we're being proactive. So you're querying my math? Sorry. 333 cats can be dissexed at a time of 12.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. It's interesting that a number of areas have been identified in this motion. And I wasn't sure why that wasn't addressed in the Uber's introduction because the motion is promote and conduct a trial microchipping of cats at Riston Vale, Ropie and Claridan Vale at the subsidised cost of $10 per cat. It's great that we are moving on this issue, but Alderman Thirley has just said in her presentation a moment ago that we're jumping the gun. And I believe we are. We are jumping the gun because at state level, the task force is finalising its report back to the minister on the draft Tasmanian cat management plan, together with recommendations on legislative changes and possible 2017/18, okay, 2017/18 for cat management initiatives. Why are we segregating one area or three areas in the community? Is it because it's a social, a low economic area and those people are being identified as having more cats than anywhere else in the city? And therefore, they ought to be extracted or basically labelled as having the worst level of cat management, let's use that term, in the total area of the city of Clarence? That, in my view, is discriminating against those people. They could honestly say, why are we being selected out of the mass and being basically targeted to have our cats put through this process when in fact, in the Meereen Range and Flakestaff Gully and in Cambridge, the cat problem, okay, that's more in the feral cat area, but nevertheless, in those areas, cats are about. The best thing I can suggest is that let's embark upon an organised basis at the state level, which the task force is currently undertaking, to address the problem as it exists across the municipalities, not selecting Claridan Vale, Riston Vale or Ropie as being those areas where people are going to be identified as having the means to bring their cats forward, to come into a particular place, produce their cats, and being told that they are being selected to have this basic trial undertaken. I don't think that's fair. I would like to see the task force continue and that the state government carry this issue across the board rather than select on certain areas where the people haven't got the means or the funds or being felt that they are being selected unharshly towards this particular trial programme. I believe it needs to be addressed, but by selecting certain groups in the community and identifying them as having a cat management problem, I think is unfair and discriminatory.
Now, a while ago, the federal minister, Greg Hunt, indicated there was going to be an extermination of feral cats on a federal basis. And that was about a year or two ago and nothing seems to have come of it. I'm just wondering how far down the track these ambitions of his regarding feral cats are going to occur because apparently feral cats kill up to 75 million local animals or indigenous animals per night, which amounts to a billion dollars, a billion animals a year. And I thought that would be a matter of urgency for the federal minister, but he essentially lacks action on this area. I just wondered if he is about to release that feral enteritis or whatever it is, it will be required for people who have cats to have them immunised? And part of that would probably be have them microchipped at the same time, otherwise it's going to be all over the road with a cat that is going to be dead anyway. So do we have any information on where the federal government's standing on this? Because we might be jumping the gun getting all these cats microchipped, not immunised. And they probably, if they start to release it, they'll be dead anyway.
Yes, Mr Mayor, through you, I'd just like clarification in terms of that this trial would be for microchipping rather than dissecting. It appears to me that Alderman Thirley was referring to dissecting. That's one question I'd like to clarify. The other one is that with the $5,000 and, as Alderman Thirley said, the 330 cats, in the general manager's comments, it was noted that there could be at least 970 cats for Riston Vale, Ropie and Claridan Vale based on limited research. Can we actually have clarification as to when the 330 figure is reached, what happens if there are others within the community who wish to have their cat microchipped but are unable to do so? How will the actual situation be in favour to a greater?
Hey, look, just on a projected budget versus a projected cost and the geo-targeting that's been put so far in this motion, I guess I'm wondering whether the motions mover and second might entertain a very minor amendment to part A so as to read, promote and conduct a trial of microchipping of cats at a subsidised cost of $10 per head. By taking out the wide postcode component that's explicitly named up in this, a trial can commence somewhere and we might find that it's such a roaring success that, guess what, that's it, that's the whole budget gone and got and you haven't delivered an unreasonable set of expectations that we can't meet? Or the flip side might be that it's so low that you then just make it a come one, come all advertisement in the Eastern Shore Sun. So I'd ask the motions mover and second whether it'll entertain that deletion so that it now read, promote and conduct a trial of microchipping of cats at a subsidised cost of $10 per head.
I appreciate the sentiment, but note this was based on information and research that the poorer areas in all capital cities are where the big problem with reading it occurs. I appreciate the input from other Aldermen. It's a sensitive area in its own right. Between information that I've been reading, discussions with the state reps of the committee and council staff, is where the decision to target certain areas was to promote pet owner responsibility. Microchipping and dissecting do not need legislation, they're already a part of a responsible pet ownership that is promoted at state level via a number of advertisements on TV. The proposed legislation is looking at council authorities' inability to manage feral cats and also to implement the legislation if it comes through in the management of urban cats. One of the projects that we have had in Clarence has been the trapping of feral cats by a local landcare group. feral cats by a local landcare group, uh, in coordination with national parks, and over a couple of years, that trapping has been highly successful in, um, lowering the number of feral cats in a wildlife area. This particular project is aimed at those areas where sometimes it is difficult for people to move around with a cat, uh, they lack transport, it has been in no way designed to, um, label those areas because I live in one and I don't need any more labelling. And also the fact that, for me, I would like to see children in particular, um, being sought to participate in a pilot project because part of this possible pet ownership is not only microchipping but for de-sexing, and also in getting them used to taking responsibility and interacting with other authorised officials to get information when they need it, and particularly, we had an outbreak, um, a couple of years ago with PAVO. So, at this point in time, the costs were, come from the cat home, were a unit cost of $25, and that we would promote it through, I would hope to promote it through the schools as well, because coming up to this season and kittens, this is where people will get a kitten and then have a real problem with being able to control it. Um, if we run out of money by any chance, we will give them a card for our next round because this is only the beginning.
Well, I was at the AGM this morning and, uh, at that, the CEO and the chairs, the reports, would have presented by the table the annual report. But first, after the AGM, we all, a board meeting, and, uh, at the moment, we are without a new CEO because Mr. West was moved to other parts of the business, and, uh, we're out of providing a consultancy service.
He thought not. He thought not.
Oh, he thought not. I will advise that the board is attempting to recruit a new CEO, wanted to go through a, uh, a sortative workshop to think about the future directions that the old must-need should move in, and that, uh...
Uh, the deputy representative, should that now be Alderman James Walker? It's now noted here, it's Alderman Peddicus.
Ah, yes, the correction. Yeah, that's correct. So, my secretary, Alderman James.
Just look, as you can note from the, um, agenda paper, the quarterly report is due, and, uh, once we provide that, then I think I can provide council with more information regard the, the process of winding up Swazza, so.
Moving on to the other one, I can advise that, uh, on Thursday the sixth, there was an extraordinary meeting of the representative group to, uh, for the chairman to respond to four questions that the chairman's having to give up to their unilateral decision to examine the dividends to be paid to council. Um, I'd like to table the chairman's detailed response for that, uh, his report to the meeting, and, uh, included in that also.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, could you just give us the, um, decision on that? Uh, what was the recommendation of that, or is that...
The, the recommendation was to recede the chairman's report.
Is that all? Okay, thanks.
Which, which was the...
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
The discussion, motion always passed. Secondly, the Tracks and Trails advisory, Alderman James.
Yes, I'm happy to move that, thanks.
Yes, second, this is the recommendation of the chairperson's report there. Thank you, Alderman James. As the committee goes along, I think this is the report, maybe you say...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move, um, Part A, that council acknowledge the minutes of the special meeting of the Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee held on Thursday the 15th of September 2016. Lee B. Aziz, C., council authorised general manager, his nominated representative, to commence negotiating with the Crown for authorisation to proceed, seeking approval to design and construct a track along the coastal reserve from Lauderdale to the property boundary at 291 South Arm Road. So we delete stage one in one, in two, also deleting stage one, and that would read, subject to the above or satisfactory progress with the same, with the same, excuse my voice, uh, proceed with design and costing of the track. And three, list for consideration the construction of the track, uh, in the 1718 Capital Works Programme. So, and ever...
I'd like to move an alternate motion. I have the conference watching film committee, Nega. I have the, the minutes of the September meeting for the Bowery Community Arts Centre.
Mayor, the August meeting of the Business Sex Board of Management.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I brought council's attention to the weekly briefing record of the 3rd of October 2016, and page eight, determination of development application at 28 Hollywood Drive in Sanford. Uh, my question, uh, is in two parts. Firstly, and through you to Mr. Lovell in his capacity as the officer responsible, uh, Mr. Lovell, firstly, why did this not come to the full council for consideration, given that there was one representative? That's the first question. While you're doing that, perhaps I can just follow up with a second question. In the actual conditions, um, no, let's go step back a step. The performance criteria identified a number of matters, and in the next instance, the representative was contacted and further conditions were made to the resolution. Should that matter as its amended plans, should that have come back to council for consideration? Appears to be some abnormality in relation to this, so once we get the question, yeah. Well, we're going to endorse tonight if we could not in fact receive the October 3rd, uh, weekly briefing report, if that's going to be the case, because I think there are some questions here that need to be resolved.
Um, perhaps I can give Mr. Lovell a bit of assistance. My recollection is on that one that it was dealt with by delegation because the applicant in question refused to give an extension of time from able to come forward to the council room. So that's the reason it was dealt with by a southern delegation. But, yes, second question, I'm worried it's a lot. With my, um, survey report and provided written, uh, application on the period of grace, so I'm, I'm quite comfortable with the proceed to, to send the reports and the information we know, but, you know, I understand why it's not... Um, endorsing, endorsing the, or noting the weekly briefing reports does not in any way, shape or form hold up the decision in respect of the application, the planning application which has been dealt with. You're not endorsing that in itself, that matter has been dealt with.
And now it doesn't require you getting further...
Yeah, I, I understand the answer.
Okay, does there any other questions?
And I would like the answer to be obviously provided to the rest of the council.
Of course.
As part of the, as part of the process.
Yeah, follow up.
Follow up, thanks, yeah.
Are there any other questions in regard to weekly briefing reports? In that case, I'll put the motion that those three reports we know, all those made. Harry's in on the seat, thank you. There are no conditions to be determined under 1.2, so now the vice-councillor, the dentist says the planning, the project is being approved, say. First of all, my main item is number 3.1, this is the developed application at 83 and 13, for the 2.1. And you're taking the place. On the application of duty, six per alone or a gap duty, and Alderman James, same as Alderman Chalmers.
Let's support the officer's report, thank you.
I have a question or matter for clarification. Firstly, uh, on page 83, uh, this shed was built and then the council found out about it, and obviously suggested, or that's probably a very mild word, to put in an application because the building was under construction and they didn't have the necessary approvals, et cetera, in order to proceed. So on page 83, there is a note, uh, it says, "In the event that the water main, uh, in the event that the, that the main is located within one metre of the footings, it would need to be relocated." So it appears, Mr. Mayor, that the water main is within one metre of the footings. Firstly, well, it would, is, is, um, that the main is located, it's saying is located, so it's, it's located within one metre, so it's, it's in black and white. Now, when will that happen and has there been a stop on the building? Uh, that's the, the first question, and the second is in relation to, um, the building notice requires the landowner to cease further works on the building until relevant approvals are in place. So the second question is, are the relevant approvals in place? And finally, on page 86, it says, "A condition approval has been recommended, reiterating that the outbuilding is to be utilised for non-habitable purposes." What guarantees has council got that it will not... Yes, for habitable purposes, three questions. Thank you.
Um, the, um, the work's actually started after the application in those years, um, and at that time, we actually, uh, in West, uh, the, the, um, length of a, of a project now, um, the storm water pipe length has not never been, it was parallel, now we don't hear exactly where it is, and, uh, the condition requires that, the proposed condition would require that the pipe be, uh, be identified and, uh, and relocated after the longest expense. The timeline for doing that is in condition four, uh, says 14 days for issue of the first identified pipe and three months for relocation. In relation to the, um, the, uh, non-habitable reason of it, there are no guarantees, no more than any, any, any of these angles takes, all we can say is that if, if it's a, a potential happening, it should be removed, any, uh, any, uh, any of the acts to actually...
I'm sure this gentleman's going to look hard and long at his decision-making abilities in the future if he has to move the storm. Right, um, these types of retrospective, um, support permits are common across Clarence at times, and I don't see any further problems.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have great pleasure in moving this motion because...
Can we have a second before we...
Yes, most certainly, it'd be interesting to see, two seconds. Yep. Look, I think they've ticked all the boxes here, I spent an afternoon, no, an hour this afternoon, reading through this, and, and as I was going, I was saying, tick, 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 because the issues of Tangara Trail, the, um, I suppose the, the historic nature of the Hawthorn Hedge, and some would argue otherwise, but that has been a, over the years, has been a, a matter of controversy in, in Sueon Road, the hedge and why in fact it should be of that, uh, in that location, et cetera, et cetera. But nevertheless, as you go through this report, they, I believe, the offices have answered the questions of the five representatives very well, and in fact, have actually taken on board their suggestions. And if we can try to do this and on a more regular basis, then I think that we are achieving our goal, or what some of us would regard as our role in local government... our goal, what some of us would regard as our role in local government, as in fact doing what is in the interest of the community, as well as giving support to the developer to be able to go ahead and obviously hope to get a tick in the box from this council to proceed. I think it's great news. I think it's done more, in my opinion, to sort of strengthen the bonds, and they have been rather tenuous at times between the developer and the council to that degree. And I think on this particular occasion, this has been handled very well and I think that those five representatives, I think to about 90% of their actions or their comments have been addressed and I would see council support.
Just in the context that this has been a long-awaited missing link with Tangara Trail, but I would also like to thank the staff for continuing to support the protection of the Hawthorns. Across Clarence, they are of a cultural significance and they have been protected with the Rookham subdivision a couple of years ago. And for some of us, we like to see those things creating that ambience in our rural environments. So, well done to the staff. Obviously, it's a very high-density residential area and an area that a lot of people would like to have more room moving. Happy to support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Did it help those of you... Did it help the player? Eric, you know, I just... Little increase of my identity, many applications are in need of improvement, go and operate this space integration to work. Or can we second your position? Okay.
Motion, which has been circulated. The amended motion actually just says that the consultants' report be received and that council undertake community consultation in the form described in the officer's report before determining whether or not to proceed with the project.
Thank you. Say that in your own intention.
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the report raises a number of issues, some of which were discussed by the speakers earlier. I don't intend to go through the report in detail because the aim of this motion is to undertake community consultation. It's not to debate the merits of the conclusions at this stage. I think when we get the consultation back, there will no doubt be more discussion at the council, but I think at this stage it's appropriate that we just get it out for consultation and I see council support.
I support Alderman Chong's comments there and it is simply saying that, you know, we have a future decision to proceed or not proceed after the committee consultation.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think that the consultants have done a great job with this inasmuch as that it's nuts and bolts issues, it's going into the Nicky, into the fire detail. And it's done us net present values quite well, I think, and it's used those different hedging amounts in relation to it. What I think that we, what will come out of this is that, and I'm just going to quote some sections of the report, and that is that the site development staging in the modelling assumptions provides the best-case scenario in terms of financial feasibility. Also in the report, it goes into and refers to, amongst other things, the question of the Southern Tasmania regional land use strategy and in particular, what is being said, that rezoning the study area would constitute urban expansion around a defined urban satellite suburb. It would also, however, have the benefit of consolidating an existing settlement and supporting the viability and diversity of local businesses and social infrastructure, thereby reducing the need to travel to large centres. And we heard tonight about Woolworths. A number of us have worked, or so I think you'd say in 15 years, tried to get that Woolworths thing up. We have worked hard as possible, first of all, to get it rezoned and then to get the consortium to have plans and have the approvals in place. And the approvals are in place, there's no doubt about it. It's just that Woolworths at this stage, it's my understanding, have other projects and one of those is in fact Injunor Fabe Development, which I must say I was up there a couple of weeks ago and it's absolutely brilliant. But nevertheless, the question here is that the diversity of local businesses and also what is happening with social infrastructure, in my view, leads to a reconsideration of the urban growth boundary. And I might add that on page 43 of the report, it states, "A minor review was completed in 2013," that's regarding Strous, "at which point the current version of the strategy was adopted. Further reviews are to take place at least every five years unless an earlier review is triggered through the monitoring indicators. Therefore, the next review is due in approximately 2018." So there is this opportunity to change the urban growth boundary, okay, and to enable, well, if there is that change, to create a whole different scenario in relation to that. The other point I would like to mention is in relation to the financial modelling. And a lot has been said by the consultants about the cost of fill and in table 13 on page 69, it goes into great detail with the net present value based on 20 cubic metres of fill and acquired property price of $525,000. And it's said here that this is considered very high, the cost of material, et cetera, may or will not give that a return on investment as would one expect. However, table 14 says, it's in the blank, for the developers, I use the word developers, that the net present value analysis for various discount rates based on free fill, free fill, acquired property price of 400, as it can be seen under these circumstances, the project has a positive net present value right across the hurdle rates of 10, 7, 5 and 3. So the question here is, will this project, you know, if it gets to that stage, be done in stages? And I think it would be better. And I'm not to say what is the best way that can be done, but it would seem from the report that it's indicated that it would need a number of developers to be able to get this particular, or this matter off the ground subject to obviously the urban growth boundary adjustment and then to proceed along those, on that course that they would determine. So it's not all bad news. I think the report has covered every angle, but it's going to give those persons, and we heard from three speakers tonight, some, I think, degree of, some insight into whether or not they are able to proceed this project.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I must say, I did find this report extremely good. It ranges from traffic to fill to cost, to roundabouts, to recommendations, et cetera, et cetera. And really, you know, I think it's a good value for money. I think the thing we're doing now is putting it out for consultation and see what happens here because, like Alderman James, I've got a feeling that this could be a consortium. I think it's very hard, it's just mild-term trouble to take it on board. But look, I'll be very interested to see what comes back from the community and really look forward to that.
Just very briefly, I thank the Aldermen for their comments and look forward to the results of the consultation so we can have an informed debate.
And expected by Alderman Chong, all those facts. The fact that Gugia did this in paper is nothing under the category of service, any kind of management. For the Government's 11.10.1, which will divorce the...
Certainly. Look, I think we've discussed this extensively in a workshop and I hope the Aldermen are quite happy with the result and happy to endorse it. I just wanted to mention the fact that this involves collaborating with a number of organisations outside of council, so it's a wonderful way of engaging the community and it should be hopefully endorsed by the rest of the council.
Mayor, I just have a strategy six, I just do have a couple of words here, which I just, prior to talking about drug abuse, someone said, "Empower the community to prevent and respond to drug and alcohol issues." It sounds nice, but even the police are not doing that. So what I said is a strategy and, you know, I just find it hard to comprehend it. You know, it's in our strategy, we really, I don't know what could be done, this is in their own families. Also, you know, it's possibly work with the Tasmanian police and relevant stakeholders to reduce incidents of drug-related activities in communities. Well, you know, I hope that we're already doing this. But also here, I see strategy nine, where it talks about improved street safety through clever contemporary design, including creative lighting, introduction of wifi hotspots, art and information, e.g. the Rosney Mall and so on. You know, I find that interesting because the Rosney Mall's been here a long time already and nothing seems to be changing. Right, so look, I like the strategy, I just think there's some things there which I find difficult to say, well, yes, that's fine.
For you, Mr. Mayor, just a note that on page 24, it has at the moment strategic plan 2010-2015, depending on the outcome of a later item tonight, we... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just in relation to those two comments, obviously this is going out for consultation for which, there's nothing to stop us making slight amendments when it comes back if we want to change any of these, certainly assuming the strategic plan is updated, that's one of them that should go in.
7.3.3, special to the appointments, there's three parts to reveal to that serial art. First is that Morgan Walker's reservation, you see.
Morgan Walker, no, you're right.
You want? I'm sorry, yeah. That's a cross reference. That's right. I apologize.
Certainly.
Thank you, Alderman. Your team has got this, all those players. That gives Eric. The second item is that council deserves to be appointed as proxy representative to the Harrowden Music Centre, which is under the current council. Do we have any other actions? First, I'd be pleased before these, sort by current representatives. Do we have any... 7.7.4, further request to raise worldwide to support... Yes, certainly. 7.5.5, this is a council of North East, the Red Canyon Valley, Rosney Park, also creating pressure. Alderman, I get it. Alderman Chong, I get it. Alderman Chong. Okay. All of those, probably then, which is part of the Angry Bay Drive, and secondly, that this part of Angry Bay Drive is a small facility or a standard small support. So, it's, if somebody's willing to do that, you could do that, we could, we could organize this, right, and I don't think this is such words.
Oh, other than to, well, other than to say that there's the potential to be a wonderful facility and it's footprints, wonderful that the Clarence Cricket Club have got a new home and that they have the capacity to really relish those facilities and they should be very proud of the fact that they're occupying them. I support the 10-year lease. We looked at, we just made discussion at workshop over the purpose of being a 10-year-plus, 10-year-plus, and this fits nicely or fits with all of the other leases of council facilities.
Now, regarding 4.1, I think that you bring those, all those... Very good. I'm requesting, page two, firstly, that we approve a food developer, so that's to develop for the wall, for example, and a consideration for the wall that's on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, only to very briefly say that the Kangaroo Bay development has the potential to be the absolute jewel in the crown for... potential to be the absolute jewel in the crown for economic development, for visitor economy in Clarence, and it's good to see this project continuing to progress.
The question in relation to part B, is there an option for preferred developer status to be withdrawn and therefore, and therefore we would have to go back to the tender process? Is that the chain of events, please?
In regard to part B only?
Yes, part B only.
Merely awarding the preferred developer status does not guarantee that the project is going to proceed. All awarding preferred developer status means as in effect.
In fact, I do not proceed, do we have to go through the process all over, start from scratch?
Through, Mr. Mayor, that would be a judgment that council could make, that's one option. By having gone through the process, council could, in one extreme, merely decide and place the landing on the urban market. So there are a range of options that are open to council, that been one. Thank you for that. How about the sixth?
First one relating to the audit committee report that reached the earlier agreement. Item five of the minutes of the audit report actually headed update on project 35 effectiveness of council's IT solution. I'm wondering whether or not, as well as the audit panel actually getting monthly progress reports on the project, could also Alderman receive update?
Through, through, Mr. Mayor, yes, it's actually quite fortunate to answer a question we only discussed that late last week and we will be forward in coffee afterwards as well. I think we've got a report on Friday, so we should get it.
And I wish to ask a second question in the closed section of the meeting because I believe it relates to a legal matter which is confidential at this point in time.
No, it isn't.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one quick question. It's in relation to Burridge Mowey. A note around the Gilf debate in the same, all contract divestments very long, just in economic terms, is the schedule seasonally adjusted?
Through, Mr. Mayor, yes it is and our schedule start is due to start within the next four months. Contract is in place and it's due to start within the next four months. But probably we could cut it, as time strikes between how early we cut it, because the earlier we cut it, the more likely that the schedule or stage of the project will require. It's a balance, but I do know that it's going to be important.
Just in the context of graffiti removal on new signage along the roads or rugby roads, would be nice if Stipe would get onto that and give them a compliment as well that their weeding and rubbish removals seem quite obvious to me.
Through, there will be a question.
I just wondered, there's a street sign at, to the entry of South Arm and it's had graffiti on it for about the last three years. I just don't know if it's one of our signs, if it's one of...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You will well recall the Elgat meeting of September 2014 where the performance ranking benchmarking measure that this council put forward was endorsed by Elgat. It's now well over two years. We have a minister that is talking constantly about the need for council improvements as far as efficiency and effectiveness and one of the demonstrated things around this is measurements. Is there anything you can report on progress on this matter or are you able to perhaps raise it again via through STCA, Elgat or indeed with the minister?
My regulation is that that got pulled into the law of government project with that. I'll get back to you on that.
I appreciate that.
Second question is in relation to, humor me a bit here, but bottom line is with ASX listed companies, as a shareholder, you can reject or adopt the remuneration report. We are shareholders of an entity called Taswater. Constitution doesn't say that we can do that, but it's just something we can look at at least, even though it carries no weight whatsoever, potentially voting in support or against the remuneration changes each and every year. Because that's a signal that's used in the corporate world to display a level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction with how near it is performing. And given, we admit to consider this as a corporatized shareholder entity, I think that it'd be quite appropriate for us to potentially speak for or against the remuneration each and every year.
Through, through, Mr. Mayor, I'm not certain that the Taswater operation picked up that section of the operating act, but nonetheless, I will write to the Corporate Secretary of Taswater asking them to postpone, to reschedule, asking them to postpone funding of it and ask for advice with your advice as you please.
I appreciate that.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, two questions. In the recent budget to be approved, $100,000 was set aside for the community building in Brisbane Vale. What is the current state at play, an investigation or any drawings that may be posed for that building?
Through, through, Mr. Mayor, we have either engaged or in the process of engaging, I think we've engaged a consultant to undertake community consultation with all the user groups around Brisbane Vale. It is certainly our intention to have a report presented to council such that it can be considered and reported time for next year's budget.
Is that consultation part of the $100,000 or is that a separate amount that has been?
No, that will be over $100,000, I think. We set, I appreciate a lot of the money was set aside to undertake community consultation and some design perhaps by asking to give some flexibility to undertake that sort of work.
Yes, look, last week Clarence Council hosted a dinner in Clarence for the Vice President, Senior Ops of the Chinese Bing Zao, I think I how I've spelled it, pronounced it, Bing Zao City. I understand there was a meeting next morning with yourself, Mr. Mayor, and the president, I think of the...
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And were any other Aldermen invited to that or is it just between yourself and the... And also, in any discussions that were hurled between yourself, was there any requests I wasn't the other Alderman invited to that.
Well, council, I think we should resent the impression of all the...